Evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 27th, 2025 City Council Meeting. Thank you for joining us tonight in this hybrid meeting format. Anyone wishing to access the meeting remotely can do so by watching the live stream on our website, the broadcast on Comcast Channel 21, or by following the access instructions listed on the City of Eugene's Public Webcast and Meetings Materials webpage. Tonight's meeting will include a public comment period, and if you wish to speak and have not already done so, please fill out a request to speak form on the Public Webcast and Meetings Materials webpage or at the entrance to this room. We will accept request to speak forms until 7:35 PM, and these forms will be used to generate the random order of speakers and correctly enter names of speakers into the public record. Public comment period will be limited to 90 minutes or conclude by 10 PM, whichever occurs first. If the number of speakers exceeds the time that we have allotted, we encourage speakers to consider abbreviating their remarks so that the maximum number of speakers can be heard from. Those joining the meeting remotely for public comment period, of course, are welcome to email their comments to council, and that is true of anyone giving public comment. As a reminder, council's meeting rules of conduct apply to all attendees, both in the chambers and in the lobby, and they include no flags, signs, loud or disruptive language, noise, or conduct that obstructs the business of the council. Please keep the room quiet and respectful of all speakers, and you are welcome to wave your hands in silent support. Additionally, we encourage all those who are ill or who have had close contact with others who are ill to join the meeting remotely rather than in person, and we have masks available in the lobby if you need one. In case of a medical emergency, an automated external defibrillator, an AED, is located on the counter behind staff on the west side of this room, and emergency exits are through the double doors located at the back of the room and the double doors at the front of the room. The doors to the patio can also be used as needed. And with that, I call the October 27th, 2025 meeting of the Eugene City Council to order. We begin this evening with a land acknowledgement. Since time immemorial, the Kalapuyia people have been the indigenous stewards to our region, building dynamic communities, maintaining balance with wildlife, and enacting sustainable land practices. This land acknowledgement is a way of resisting the erasure of indigenous histories and to honor native communities by inviting truth and reconciliation. Following treaties between 1851 and 1855, Kalapuyia people were dispossessed of their indigenous homeland by the United States government and forcibly removed to the Coast Reservation in western Oregon. As we consider the impacts of colonization, we also acknowledge the strength and resiliency of displaced indigenous people. The City of Eugene is built within the traditional homelands known as Kalapuyia Elijhi. Kalapuyia descendants are citizens of the Confederated Tribes of Grand Ron Community of Oregon and the Confederated Tribes of Soletz Indians of Oregon, and they continue to make contributions in our communities here and across the lands, and we express our respect for the inherent political sovereignty of all federally recognized tribal nations and indigenous people who live in the state of Oregon and across the nation. Our first item on tonight's agenda is committee reports and items of interest, and I now open the floor for committee reports from council and as well as items of interest. Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. On this last Thursday night, I attended a meeting with Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders regarding the string of thefts and burglaries and home invasions that have occurred over the last period of time. I want to acknowledge that Merrick Knutson and most of my colleagues on this council were able to be there. I thought it was a very informative meeting, and I want to extend my appreciation to not only the people who pulled this together, but also to the Eugene Police Department, which successfully apprehended seven suspects associated with these criminal behaviors have really rocked this part of our community. And I think it's important that we stand together and support the efforts to protect people that are being targeted, mostly from being business owners, is what I understand from this, but they're targeting this segment of our community. And that's wrong at any time, and I think it's important that we speak up and stand together on that. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to councilors who were there on Thursday night.
Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Groves, for your attendance and your words. As I understand it, there have been more than 20 burglaries targeting the Asian community, the API community here in Eugene since the spring of 2023. So it was indeed a powerful conversation, informative presentations. Thank you to Chief Skinner and to our partners from the DOJ and the DA's office and Springfield PD and Lane County sheriffs for participating. Thank you to Jenny Jonak, Jen Sina Hawkins, and Oregon's, excuse me, and the Asian American Council of Oregon for hosting such an important, informative forum. I also want to thank members of the Human Services Commission and the Poverty Homeless Board for participating in a joint training earlier this afternoon. Mayor, great to see you at that event. The training was strengthening systems through a trauma-informed lens, and it was a most informative, albeit sobering, yet inspiring, conversation. Portland fire officials are investigating a possible arson as a suspicious fire burned the home last night in the wee hours of the morning, burned the home and vehicles of Portland City Councilor Candace Avalos. I just want to mention it in that my heart sinks hearing such news, and I would hope that this council stands in solidarity with Counselor Avalos and keep Counselor Avalos in your prayers and your thoughts. And I'm pleased to announce that the National League of Cities, which shall be attending in Salt Lake next month, will be taking up, because of this issue, taking up a forum or an informational forum around the topic of staff and public official safety. Just the very fact that we have to have the conversation is disturbing. So I guess my presentation tonight, my update, is cheery. It's not. It's sobering, so I wanted to bring that to folks' attention and denounce violence, political violence, of all shapes and sizes as vehemently as I possibly can. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, there are committee updates or items of interest from council. I will just express solidarity and appreciation to our elected officials, public officials, and certainly to my fellow mayors in Oregon and across our country as we grapple with some extraordinary times and some real pressures on cities and communities that many of us have never seen in our lifetimes, and that connectedness and relationship among people is incredibly important. When I was in Portland a few weeks ago, I think what was particularly powerful in that conversation about the role of community-based public safety professionals in contrast with the role and responsibility of our military, was hearing from my fellow mayors who are also veterans of service, both in our armed forces and as National Guard members, and it's a privilege to work alongside them and also to work alongside all of you in community. Thank you, council, for those updates, and that concludes our first agenda item this evening. I'll now turn to the Assistant City Manager to introduce our second agenda item, which is a priority goal action on an ordinance concerning low-income rental housing property tax exemption and a priority goal action, a resolution adopting amended standards and guidelines for processing applications for low-income rental housing property tax exemptions, the affectionate LRTI that we all know so well.
Thank you, Mayor. So priority goal action item, adoption of a resolution approving low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the Lucy Apartments. City Council has asked to adopt a resolution approving a 20-year low-income rental housing property tax exemption. All right. Sarah always makes it look so easy, but let me try this again. Thank you. All right. So, action on the ordinance removing date restrictions for limited equity cooperatives under the LRTI program and a resolution for adopting standards for guidelines and processing of LRTI applications. Council has asked to take action on a proposed ordinance amending the Eugene Code to align with updated state statutes for the low-income rental housing property tax exemption LRTI. The amendment would allow limited equity cooperatives that own housing constructed or converted before February 12, 1990, to be eligible for the exemption. If council adopts the proposed ordinance, council is also asked to take action on the proposed resolution adopting updated standards and guidelines for processing LRTI applications to ensure consistency with the amended city code. A public hearing on the proposed ordinance was held on October 20, 2025, and staff are available to answer questions or provide additional information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. There are no questions from council, then I will turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
Move to adopt an ordinance concerning low-income rental housing property tax exemption and amending Section 2.939 of the Eugene Code 1971.
Second. Additional discussion from council? Being none, I'll now take a vote for this motion. Counselors, please lock in your votes on the tablets in front of you, and the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you very much. Council President, if adopted, we have a second question.
Yes. Move to adopt a resolution adopting amended standards and guidelines for processing applications for low-income rental housing property tax exemptions and repealing Resolution Number 5297.
Second. Additional discussion from council? Being none, I'll take a vote for this motion. Counselors, please lock in your votes, and the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you very much. That concludes our second agenda item. Moving on to our third agenda item, I will turn back to the Assistant City Manager to introduce a priority goal action on the adoption of a resolution approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the Lucy Apartments.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council has asked to adopt a resolution approving a 20-year low-income rental housing property tax exemption LRTI for the Lucy Apartments. The Lucy Apartments will be three residential buildings and a community building located at 860 Huntacre Lane. The development will include 36 income-restricted units serving households earning up to 60% of the area median income. The project meets the required LRTI eligibility criteria, and staff are available for questions or to provide additional information. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, staff. Any additional discussion from council? Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. You can see along the back room, our guests tonight from the Western Regional Council of Carpenters, thank you for being here, reached out prior to this meeting with a request that I'm going to make in the form of a formal motion and just ask colleagues, similar to other actions that we've done in the past when an issue comes up and folks want to provide some public comment, that we honor the motion to, well, I'll make the motion now, I'll make the request, move to postpone Priority Goal Action Three until the conclusion of tonight's public comment meeting.
Second. And council will now take a vote on this motion to postpone. Please lock in your votes on the tablets in front of you, and this item, Agenda Item Three, is postponed until this evening after the public comment period. Thank you. Now my agenda is reordered. Thank you. Does not conclude our third agenda item. We will return to that one, but move on to the fourth agenda item on tonight's agenda now, which is Consent, Calendar One, Approval of City Council Minutes, and also Approval of City Council Tentative Agenda. Are there any questions from council? Being none, I will turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
I move to approve the items on Consent, Calendar One.
Second. Any discussion from council? Being none, I'll take a vote for this motion. Counselors, please lock in your votes, and the motion passes by a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. That concludes our fourth agenda item this evening. Moving on to our next agenda item is Consent, Calendar Two, a resolution annexing land to the City of Eugene located at 3241 Downing Street, and resolution annexing land to the City of Eugene located at 2588 Dale Avenue. Any questions from council? Counselor Clark?
Just a point of order. Don't we typically always do the annexation motions after a public hearing, just for the opportunity for people to speak?
I think, staff, I would need some feedback about annexation locations and agendas and typical locations.
Your operating agreements do have it after public comment, and it has been, for the past year and a half, been moved in front of public comment, but you're welcome to make a motion for it to go after public comment because it is agendized right now before public comment.
Thank you, staff. There are motions?
Yeah, I was just waiting to be called on. I apologize, Mayor. I would move to table the annexation votes until after the public forum, just in case there's someone who wants to speak to that issue prior to us making a decision as we do with the other one.
And it would, just for clarification, it's not a table, so no one needs to pull it. There's nothing to put on the table and pull off the table. It's a motion just to move it to the end.
Sorry, I should have said, motion to postpone until, yes.
Perfect. Second. Thank you. Then take a vote on this motion to postpone, council. Please lock in your votes, and the motion passes eight to zero. So we will also return to Agenda Item Five, following public comment period, which is our very next agenda item. That concludes that discussion for this time, and we will move right on to the public comment period, which is typically the last item on our agenda, but tonight we will have two agenda items following. Public comment period is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by hearings official. Staff, can you please share a list and the number of speakers that have signed up to speak by 7:35, and also announce the first speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. We have 39 folks signed up to speak this evening. I will announce two speakers' names at a time. When you are called to speak, please state your name and your ward or neighborhood, if known, before beginning your comments. When you are announced as the next speaker, please move to the seat in the front row designated for the next speaker. When it is your turn, you may come to the podium. Please leave any bags you may have with you at your seat. If you have documents to give council, please place them in the basket near the podium. You will have two and a half minutes to speak. The timer will flash red when you have 15 seconds remaining to speak. Your microphone will be muted at the two and a half minute mark. Please note that use of profanity is prohibited, and any instances of profanity will result in immediate termination of speaking privilege. Our first speakers this evening are Tim Morris, followed by Celine Swenson-Harris.
That's the first time ever. Wow. Mayor Knutson, President Evans, and councilors, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. For the record, my name is Timothy Morris. I'm a Ward One resident, and I'm the Executive Director of the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association. I'm here today to ask you to direct staff to work with community groups and renters to bring the Tenant Opportunity of Purchase Act, or TOPA, framework in renter protections Phase Three. TOPA establishes a city-structured process for forming tenant associations, which ensures the residents have enough time to consider and respond to purchase offers. After forming an association in multi-unit buildings, tenants can enjoy the first right of refusal to actually purchase their homes instead of just being a part of an exchange between two entities, and a prospectus has already been sent to your emails for more details. This is a common sense, proven policy designed to keep people in their homes and preserve affordability in our communities. It gives tenants the chance to organize, to work together with nonprofits and other entities, and to make an offer to buy buildings when they go up for sale before it's sold to out-of-state investors who often raise rents and displace long-term residents. There is an example that happened just a few weeks ago where one of the new riverfront developments is now sold to Gray Star, which is the largest, one of the largest property management companies in the United States, known for ratcheting up rents and evicting tenants. TOPA has a proven record of over 40 years in Washington DC and similar policies passed in Berkeley and San Francisco. We have success stories even here in Lane County, with residents at Vita Lee, Dexter Oaks, Shoreview Meadow, and the Filbert Grove collectives, who have all utilized manufactured homes-stated opportunities to purchase frameworks to buy and operate their parks. And the residents themselves get to set the rent prices, repairs, get to have those conversations about being a community together. TOPA provides a clear and direct path to homeownership, something that is severely lacking in our city, in our state, and in our country. We urge you to move forward with a TOPA policy here in Eugene. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Our next speakers are Celine Swenson-Harris, followed by Leonardo DiFranco.
Good evening, Mayor and council. For the record, my name is Celine Swenson-Harris. I am here this evening in my capacity as Chair of the Democratic Party of Lane County, and here to voice our support for a tenant opportunity to purchase motion here at council. One of the primary concerns that we hear from our members and from community members at large in talking about local politics and policy is housing affordability, and I'm sure that that is something that doesn't come as a surprise to any of you, because I know that you talk to your constituents, and I know that you're hearing the same things. Our platform calls on our local elected officials to look for innovative new solutions to our housing crisis. We also passed a resolution, and our platform specifically identifies TOPA as one of these potential solutions to make affordable housing a reality here in our community, to make it possible for people who love this place to stay here and be staple here. In a time when we know that public dollars are stretched thin, we also know that this is a policy solution that is low or no cost to the city. It doesn't call on you to invest additional dollars. It provides people with an opportunity to own their home. It's also a proven solution for other housing types here in Oregon and for these housing types in other states, and with that, I urge you to look into this as a way that we can make Eugene a place that more people are able to stay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Celine. Our next speakers are Leonardo DiFranco, followed by Jane Lewis.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. It's actually Leonard DiFranco, and I'm in Ward Five, I believe, and I'm here because I believe public safety should never come at the expense of public trust. Automated license plate reader systems like Flock cameras don't just record criminals. They record everyone who drives by, parents dropping off kids, workers heading to their jobs, immigrants, activists like myself, and neighbors simply living their lives. Every plate is scanned, stored, and shared, often with agencies far beyond our city's control. Once this infrastructure exists, it can easily be used for other purposes, tracking protests, monitoring who visit certain places, or identifying those who dissent from the current regime. And we've already seen in other cities how these databases are misused or breached. The danger isn't hypothetical, it's real. We also need to be honest about results. There is no independent evidence that ALPRs reduce violent crime. They might help recover a few stolen vehicles, but at a high cost, both financially and constitutional rights. Safety doesn't come from constant surveillance. It comes from trust, transparency, and investment in people, better lighting, youth programs, community partnerships, and crisis response. Those build safety without watching everyone who drives through our neighborhoods. I urge this council to cancel the city's use of ALPR cameras until there is public oversight, transparent data- until there is public oversight, transparent data policies, and true community consent. We deserve safety and freedom, not one at the cost of the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Leonard. Our next speakers are Jane Lewis, followed by Jeremy Ray.
Hello, council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Jane Lewis. I'm from Ward Three. I come here tonight as a concerned resident to discuss Flock's safety and the city's contract with them. I believe the contract quite simply should be ended. There are many concerns with this program, but specifically I wanted to talk about data privacy as someone who has significant experience with that subject and also the general sense of fear that this creates within our community. Flock Safety, as you might know, is a company in Atlanta, Georgia. They have cameras all around Eugene and when they take a photo of a license plate, this data is sent directly to their centralized servers. There is no, it's not kept locally. It's sent to their centralized servers with which they can technically do whatever they want. They say that they're being accountable and not sending this to the federal government, which has requested this. Whether or not they will actually work with the federal government is, I think, something that we cannot trust them to comply with because we as Americans are currently experiencing unprecedented civil liberties violations. For example, as reported by the ACLU, the government is already taking steps to consolidate information across multiple federal agencies to build complete profiles of people. They have already sought data, Flock's data from Eugene before, and if this program continues, I believe it is likely they will eventually succeed. This government quite simply does not operate within the rule of law as we commonly understand it and has repeatedly shown that when it comes to our rights or repressing citizens, they will repress without any hesitation. Even if Flock was only capturing what they say they are, license plates, this information can still be used in nefarious ends. By using Flock, we are enabling a surveillance system that tracks the movements of everyone, not just suspected criminals, and keeping this data to an unaccountable private tech company. If American tech companies have shown two things is that they will misuse and violate data privacy laws and comply when the federal government tells them to. So I ask you this, can you trust that the federal government would not eventually get Flock to turn over all their data they've collected in their centralized server? I believe that we should all feel safe in our community. Public safety begins with, begins with the unalienable right to privacy and Flock surveillance will only undermine that. So I ask that you cancel the contract with Flock and remove the cameras. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Our next speakers are Jeremy Ray, followed by Cameron Stringfield.
Jeremy Ray, Ward One, and I'm pleased to give you the opportunity to hear from your constituents tonight. I'm disappointed, extremely disappointed with our police chief as well as our city manager for engaging in Flock, in deploying the hardware, signing contracts without engaging our community to make sure that this is something we're all acceptable with. I carry on to tracker device, but I know the extent, I know the risks, and I make a conscious decision of of who I engage with, what data I'm willing to give away. And I'm not willing to give my data to Flock. I'm not willing to give a data set for them to market to third parties to use for advertising or for, or for collaboration with other law enforcement. I don't have a lot of respect or trust for our own community's law enforcement. And I, you know, I, those that are unknown are even worse, or don't, yeah, I don't have as much trust with. I would like to see the hardware removed from the public right of way. I think it's unacceptable that the cameras are still up. At the least, cover them until you can actually get crews out there to remove it, but the hardware should come down and should come out of the public right of way. It is known that Flock has had relationships with federal law enforcement and federal law enforcement is doing a lot of messed up stuff these days. There's a lot of abuse going on and I don't think that, that we should trust that Flock has our community's best interest in mind. They report to the shareholders. Also, I want to see the city do what they can to reengage and reboot cahoots. I think it's extremely unfortunate that that resource is, is no longer available in our community. So I ask you to do whatever you can to, to get that resource going again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Our next speakers are Cameron Stringfield, followed by Ellie Urbansik.
Good evening. My name is Cameron Stringfield. My pronouns are she/her and I'm a member of the Party for Socialism and Liberation. Look, when it comes to the Flock issue in Eugene, the writing is clearly on the wall. Hundreds of people have sacrificed their Monday nights twice a month to demand you end the contract with Flock. To this date, I've still never seen anyone show up to a city council meeting and support of Flock. Nearly two thousand people have signed the petition. Over sixteen orgs have signed onto a letter opposing the cameras. And even just recently, the ACLU of Oregon sued you, Eugene, over the denials of public records requests. Even Ron Wyden came out after making an informal agreement with Flock and came out against them and encouraged cities like Eugene to remove the cameras. Once again, thank you for voting to turn the cameras off. But now I ask you to take the next brave step and move to terminate the contract with Flock. It is in the public interest to defend our civil liberties, our immigrant neighbors, our queer neighbors, and more. Flock is a liability for the city of Eugene and it is imperative that it be removed. I also just want to take the time to address a smear against us by Police Commissioner Jack Rady that we were anti-police and therefore dumb. Members of our community who oppose Flock have a wide range of views on police. What can be said, however, is that EPD has routinely failed to answer our questions, to be transparent about the system, and to build trust with the community. That being said, EPD claims they don't have enough officers to address public safety issues and crime in Eugene. How much of that is because of the loss of cahoots in April? Please, if you'd actually like to address public safety and free up officers to tackle more serious criminal activity, schedule a work session to get Willamette Valley Crisis Care fully funded and back on the streets of Eugene. Eugene was brought up in the New York City mayoral debate by Zoran Mamdani not because of our magical Flock system that captures a handful of criminals, but because of cahoots and its real proven effects for our community. Crime is prevented with well-funded social services, education, healthcare, housing, community, and culture, not dragnet surveillance. Cancel Flock, fund Willamette Valley Crisis Care, and rebuild community trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Cameron. Our next speakers are Ellie Urbansik, followed by Hava Cronin.
Hello, my name is Ellie Urbansik. I'm from Ward Three and I'd like to share with you some recent articles from the past month or so. From the Evanston Roundtable, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five, private surveillance vendor Flock Safety reinstalled all of its stationary license plate cameras in Evanston that had previously been removed, apparently doing so without authorization from the city, which sent the company a cease and desist order Tuesday afternoon depending that the cameras be taken back down. This decision came after the discovery that Flock had allowed US Customs and Border Protection to access Illinois cameras in a pilot program against state law. And after the roundtable reported in June, the out-of-state law enforcement agencies were able to search Flock's data for assistance in immigration cases. From Popular Information, October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, records from the federal procurement data system reveal that ICE has increased spending on weapons, including guns, chemical munitions, explosives, and guided missiles by roughly seven hundred percent compared to twenty-twenty-four levels. From NPR, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, Immigration and Customs Enforcement has recorded its deadliest year since the early two thousands as agency officials push to increase the number of people in its custody. Earlier today, a community member was taken from the federal building in DHS custody, like dozens of others in recent months. The people of Eugene do not want tools of surveillance in our neighborhoods. While pausing the cameras is a good start, they must be removed and the city's contract with Flock canceled as soon as possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ellie. Our next speakers are Hava Cronin, followed by Danny Patch.
Hi, good evening. My name is Hava Cronin and I live in Ward Seven. I would like to start with some appreciations. My partner and I are glad to see that the Flock camera contract is paused. We would like to see it canceled for all the important reasons stated during the past few months. I also want to thank the city of Eugene for passing renters protections such as capping rental application fees at ten dollars. I work with low-income families with small children and application screening fees can be as high as thirty to fifty dollars per, or more per adult. When you are low income, that is just too much. Relocation assistance has been essential for families to move when their leases are not renewed due to, due to no fault of their own. I am appreciative of the work of Amy Cameron, the city's rental analyst, and the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association. I would not be able to support families without these resources. I previously, I previously spoke about the need to evaluate the impact of non-owner occupied short-term rentals on homelessness. I hope the city will do this. I work with a family, two adults, four children, who were housed during the pandemic because the owner couldn't use his extra home as an Airbnb. Come to the end of the pandemic and this family's lease was not renewed and because of the housing crisis, they were homeless for more than three years. These children had special needs and when you are experiencing homelessness, that means appointments with specialists are disrupted, as is schooling. The long-term impact of this trauma on the family and for our community should be felt by everyone. I would like the city to adopt TOPA as part of the third phase of renter protections as another tool in the toolbox to address housing crisis. It's one of those upstream solutions. I started watching the YouTube on the Housing Oregon channel to learn more about it. I do know what happens when an apartment or mobile home park is sold and the tenants have literally nowhere to go because of the high cost of housing. That's what I face in my work. I give thanks every day that I have a home and will not be evicted. I'm not special, I'm just lucky. And I think all of us who are lucky in that way have to focus on making sure no one has to face losing their housing because their home has now become a commodity. Thank you for your time and your work to make Eugene a safe place for the most vulnerable.
Thank you, Hava. Our next speakers are Danny Patch, followed by Molly Goulet.
I think it's really fair to ask why you hate us so much. All you do is take things away from us. You take our money by the tens of millions of dollars. You take away our right to vote on financial matters, which is our right, not yours. You spy on us with your cameras and you eliminate our roads so we can safely, efficiently work in this town. And that's a silent killer, the accidents, the property damage. You're eliminating our ability to drive in this town. You hate us. You constantly take things away from us. And I think the city manager needs to be fired immediately. I'm told by the city staff that she pioneered this little plan with these cameras. What other baddako, what other thing is going to cost us hundreds of thousands of dollars to get out of that she caused? The whole financial mess this summer, these cameras, she's a total mobile dumpster fire. That's all she is. And you're going to let her stay around? Because I know she's leaving soon, but she can do a lot of damage in what time she has left. And I think we're surrounded by a bunch of incompetent people who don't have the guts to do the right thing. The camera thing was a no-brainer. I mean, anybody in Eugene would have said no. So here we are, how much is it going to cost to get out of that contract? So I ask why you hate us so much? You constantly stab us in the back. You think that somehow we're a plague that you have to listen to so you're trying to figure out ways to cut our ability to speak to you. And I'm still asking for an answer of what happened to the money that was donated this summer for the SOS program that you sat up there and acted like a clown and got all this money, almost fifteen thousand dollars. Where'd it go? What happened to it? No one's ever answered that question. It's time for you to start working for us instead of working for yourselves and building yourselves stupid buildings that we don't even fit into. I mean, we're, how long have you had this building and we've already outgrown it? Bunch of losers. And fire the city manager. She's a disaster.
Thank you, Danny. Our next speakers are Molly Goulet, followed by Kai Fireside.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Molly Goulet. I'm a homeowner in Ward One. I've been a Eugene renter in the past and I work locally as a tenant attorney. I'm here today to ask you to support adding a tenant option to purchase to phase three of the renter protections process. Tenant Option to Purchase, or TOPA, is a proven strategy that increases local homeownership and preserves affordable housing. Washington DC has used TOPA for over forty years as its primary strategy to preserve affordable housing. In the framework that we've proposed, Eugene's TOPA would give tenants the right of first refusal, to purchase a rental complex of four or more units when the owner chooses to put it on the market or receives an offer. There is minimal contract impairment in this strategy as the owner would be able to request the appraised value for the property in the sale. The tenants have an organizing period, which requires fifty percent participation to proceed. And then if they are able to gather the numbers, there's a second period so that they can secure financing. Community housing nonprofits have offered to step forward and help organize tenants, but we would love to see the city support in the notification process and the potential allocation of housing trust funds for deposit assistance. The average unit would cost less than two hundred thousand dollars with no subsidy. And tenants who have a housing voucher would be able to convert that to pay their mortgage. Eugene needs stable, affordable housing with local ownership and TOPA is an excellent tool to keep our renting neighbors in their homes. Community forms by repeated small contacts. I know this because I live in the friendly and people are always outside walking their dogs. They're always out at the free pantries. They're always out at the little libraries. They're out and we meet each other. We can strengthen Eugene's communities by keeping neighbors in their homes using TOPA. Right now, many renters don't realize that they could form an HOA, join a land trust, or form a limited equity co-op to control their housing. TOPA would offer the resources for them to leverage the-
Thank you, Molly. Your time is concluded. Our next speakers are Kai Fireside, followed by Jeffrey Albanese.
Good evening, council. Every issue that people bring up here to you is related. We speak out against Flock and Chief Skinner says he needs it as a force multiplier because the police department is understaffed. We tell you that we need cahoots or Willamette Valley Crisis Care. That entity would handle some of the calls for service that we don't need a police response to. Most of the issues come down to funding. There's talk about an Amazon warehouse. That is not going to bring money into the city. Amazon does not create high-quality or well-paying jobs. It will add traffic and wear and tear to the streets. While you struggle to find additional funding and cut costs, please consider the costs of Flock. A grant taken out of the state general fund covered the initial installation and subscription fee. But when the devices are damaged, the city pays the cost of repair or replacement. When the devices are misused, the city will pay the settlement to the victims. In fact, I encourage you to look up all the lawsuits around the country that are surrounding Flock customers. I tried to do that so that I could come up here and tell you exactly how many there are, but after two hours of searching, I gave up counting. There are so many lawsuits. Having Flock in this city puts us at risk of countless costly litigation efforts. Ongoing lawsuits include alleging violations of the Fourth Amendment, violating sanctuary state laws. Misinterpretations by the AI alone have resulted in, again, countless lawsuits against cities. Please consider all of the secondary costs. And I want to address the mistaken idea that Eyes Off Eugene has any anti-police sentiment. I am an organizer of Eyes Off Eugene. I am a former nine-one-one dispatcher. The Springfield Chief of Police, Jamie Rush, has agreed to meet with us. She's met with us previously. We're meeting with her again this week. The fact that the chief of police that will meet with us is not calling us anti-police should really speak for itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Kai. Our next speakers are Jeffrey Albanese, followed by Sophie Bybee.
Hi, my name is Jeff Albanese. I live in Ward Three. I'm a renter in Eugene and have been since twenty-eighteen. And in twenty-twenty, during the pandemic, I was no cause evicted by my landlord. And I was very impressed in the years after that with the work that the city council did to support Eugene renters by passing- by passing the Phase Two Renter Protections, one of which addressed the issue that I got to experience in 2020. Tonight, I'm here to ask for the council to further strengthen the support you've shown for Eugene renters and direct city staff to bring forward an opportunity to purchase ordinance for the council's consideration. Opportunity to purchase rights can help renters stay in their homes when their landlord wants to sell their building, does what it sounds like. Similar legislation has helped renters in Washington DC to preserve the affordability of their homes for over forty years. Closer to home, manufactured home park residents throughout Oregon currently have opportunity to purchase rights by state statute. These laws have helped preserve thousands of affordable homes throughout the state. And Eugene could do something very cool by extending similar protections to multifamily renters. I also work for Square One Villages, an affordable housing developer in Eugene. We focus specifically on cooperative housing development. And Square One is also officially supporting Opportunity to Purchase Ordinance in Eugene. We've supported state legislation the past couple long sessions in the legislature too, just by the way. So please, I hope you will build on the important work that this council has done in the past few years and direct city staff to bring an opportunity to purchase ordinance as a future agenda item for the council's consideration.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next speakers are Sophie Bybee, followed by Steve Belzer.
Hello, Council and Mayor, thank you for this time. My name is Sophie Bybee, and I'm a renter in Ward One. As a staff member at CASA of Oregon, I've been working with the coalition that's here tonight to ask for the incorporation of TOPA into the renter protections Phase Three process. We know the TOPA model works to preserve long-term housing affordability and keep communities together. That's why the state has already, has a similar opportunity to purchase framework for manufactured home parks and marinas. Since 2009, my team at CASA has worked with residents of manufactured home communities who want to form cooperatives and purchase their parks from private landlords. We also provide technical assistance to these cooperatives post-purchase. Nationally, the annual fee increase in commercially-owned manufactured home communities is over seven percent. In cooperatives, the annual fee increase is less than one percent per year. In Oregon, CASA works with twenty-eight manufactured home cooperatives, including one in Eugene Springfield and four more in Lane County. Many cooperatives haven't seen a fee increase since they purchased their park. Resident ownership not only preserves affordability, but also preserves and strengthens sense of community and connection to place. I asked a Lane County cooperative resident what the biggest difference in her life was before and after the community bought the park. She looked at me like she was surprised I had to ask. "The fear," she said. She remembers waking up every day after learning the park might sell, afraid that she would lose her home. Her ninety-year-old mother lives independently in another home in the community. It didn't seem possible they'd find somewhere else they could afford to be neighbors. But instead of losing their strong social and support networks, this resident became a director on her cooperative's board after the community organized to purchase the park. Her and her mom are still neighbors, living half a mile away from her mom's doctor and their favorite local walking spot. If we want an engaged and invested community, we need to give people the opportunity to stay in the community. It's not only tenants that have this goal. Just this morning, I responded to an email from a private landlord in Bend who is interested in selling his park to the residents. He knows how crazy housing costs are and doesn't want to see people displaced. Frameworks like TOPA accomplish what they set out to do, preserve affordability and stabilize communities. They've won broad coalition support across this housing sector. Please consider building on the success of these frameworks and including TOPA in Phase Three. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophie. Our next speakers are Steve Belzer, followed by Ashley Wright.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Belzer, resident of Ward Seven, and I am a hospice nurse here in the Eugene Springfield community. I'm here with Equitable Access Eugene, and I'm asking for the decriminalization of psychedelic plants and fungi. My experiences with psychedelic medicines, particularly psilocybin mushrooms, were transformative and altered the course of my life for the better. They helped me not only understand intellectually, but experience viscerally the interconnectedness with one another, our planet, the other living beings inhabiting it, and the energy and materials that surround us. These experiences helped me step outside of my limited perspective and catch a glimpse of the greater whole, of which we are all apart, and awoke a deeper compassion in my heart for others and myself. They helped me fully grasp and embrace my own impermanent nature and see that aging and death are not something to be feared, but rather inherent to the beauty of life, freeing myself from the burden of death anxiety and fostering in me a perspective that has served me well in my career as a hospice nurse. Indeed, it was these experiences that helped set me on a path that ultimately led to finding my calling, providing care for those nearing the ends of their life journeys. Based on my personal experiences, what I know of the experiences of people close to me, and the body of research on these substances, psychedelic medicines are relatively safe and can provide profound benefits. They're powerful gifts freely given to us by the earth. The birthright of all people born on this planet should be available to all people who seek to benefit from them, regardless of their economic status. Which is why I support the efforts of Equitable Access Eugene and to decriminalize the collection, cultivation, and gifting of psychedelic plants and fungi. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next speakers are Ashley Wright, followed by Chaz Kern.
Hi, I'm Ashley Wright, I live in Ward Two. I'm going to keep this short so more people can speak. My fellow community members have given very good reasons to cancel the Flock contract and take down the cameras. They're smart, please listen to them. Do the right thing, take down the cameras, and cancel the Flock contract. Thanks.
Thank you, Ashley. Our next speakers are Chaz Kern, followed by Pete Goldsmith.
Hello, my name is Chaz Kern, I'm a renter in Ward Two. I currently work as a project manager in housing development at Square One Villages, a local nonprofit that builds permanently affordable cooperative housing in Eugene and Lane County. I'm here tonight to ask you to direct staff to include a Tenant's Opportunity to Purchase Act, or TOPA, in Phase Three of the renter protections process. TOPA gives renters the first chance to decide who will purchase the property they live in when it puts up for sale. It sets a clear, time-bound process that gives renters choices and a fair say on what happens in their homes. Of these choices, they can partner with a nonprofit developer to keep rents affordable and secure long-term rent protections, or buy their building together as a condo or co-op. At Square One Villages, we've seen how residents can become homeowners through co-ops, creating housing that stays permanently affordable and are governed by the people who live there. TOPA would make this kind of collective ownership easier to achieve for existing renters across Eugene. In Washington DC, TOPA has worked for more than forty years, supported by a network of tenant organizers, attorneys, advocates, and mission-driven developers. Between 2006 and 2020, it helped preserve and create over sixteen thousand affordable homes in DC, showing that when renters have a fair process, they can strengthen their communities for the long term. And learning from DC's history, we know that TOPA takes partnerships to succeed. And here in Eugene, we have tenant organizers, attorneys, mission-driven developers, advocates ready to work alongside the city to build this TOPA framework. Please consider including TOPA framework in Phase Three of the renter protection process. Thank you.
Thank you, Chaz. Our next speakers are Pete Goldsmith, followed by Liam O'Grady.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Pete Goldwest, I live in Ward One. I serve on the city's Public Art Committee and I work with TALC, the Trans Alliance of Lane County. I want to, again, express my sincere appreciation for the decisive action you all took to turn off the Flock cameras. This decision was an important step to reverse some of the damage that has been done to the public trust in our community. I'm here again tonight with so many others because we want to underline the importance of ensuring that the city follows through on this action. Every day, these cameras are looming over us as another day of an ongoing threat to our freedom. As I've mentioned, I work with TALC. I have the opportunity to hear firsthand how extraordinarily under threat this community feels from the increasingly vicious and targeted actions of our federal government. Trans people, immigrants, people reliant on food assistance, and on and on and on. We're all daily taking turns being blamed for MAGA's government shutdown. This authoritarian regime is working overtime to build animosity and make the world more hostile to our community. I'm sure that as a member of the Eugene City Council, you may feel very much removed from these actions, but from the point of view of a member of these targeted, scapegoated communities, the existence of these intrusive surveillance cameras is just another piece of an increasingly oppressive authoritarian machine. There's really no room for middle ground here. We've all talked at length about what an appallingly bad decision it was to enter into this agreement with the Flock company. But every day, these cameras sit over our streets. Every day, when that contract still exists, is another day that EPD can continue employing their very active propaganda branch to gin up manufactured stories to chip away at the public resolve on this issue. We're here today because we're not budging on this, we'll be here again next time if we need to, and on and on. But we need you to continue acting quickly and decisively. We need you not to waver at this point. We need you to put an end to the ongoing intimidation of our community. We need you to bring this whole mess to a close and not leave it looming over all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Our next speakers are Liam O'Grady, followed by Win Mansell.
Councilman Mayor, my name is Liam O'Grady, I'm thankful to be here to speak. I've got three subjects I want to touch base on. Moms, indigenous peoples, and the needy people. There's the discovery that was made was that the children depend on the moms for nurturing, so we've decided we'd better unite the brothers for the mothers because we can have our priorities that way and have a call to center our social movement around the moms' mental health. Moms' peace of mind, that kind of thing. So the mention of a word called eumetrospectrophie, I mean, for lack of better words, describing the well-measured kind of peace to provide for provisions being able to be nourished. The little things that can make a big difference with the journey on that sense of the hope for some kind of collective stance for such a thing. The idea about Thanksgiving coming, I'd be hoping for a gesture where we could have a sense of acknowledging the original settlers with a placement such as two feathers that may be different, but then a stone of sound grounds between them, trying to unite the tribes in a sense. And maybe the Maori word for returning was hokiana. We could find a way to send a kind of like a metronome or going checking between two, like just wanting to touch base and ensure the maintenance of sound grounds being possible between, you know, living in a camp with neighbors and trying to learn how to negotiate, or not negotiate, but to try to find some peace that way. The last, I guess, sorry. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Our next speakers are Win Mansell, followed by John Doe.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilors. My name is Win, I'm from Ward Seven, and I don't think I can say what has been already said so eloquently by my fellow citizens. I do wish you would have acted faster. Please get the cameras down, cancel the contract. One thing that has distressed me is I've heard a lot of reliance around legal language, like, "The contract will protect us," or "The contract allows for this." I think, as was touched on earlier, the experience of the residents of Evanston, Illinois, discovered that the contract did not protect them. Flock was more than willing to put the cameras back up and required not only the cease and desist that was mentioned, but by my understanding, that the police had to actually black-bag and lock the cameras to prevent them from being used. So, again, I will reiterate, please get the cameras down, but also think ahead and build for yourselves the tools that you'll need to ensure compliance with the contracts that the city enters into on behalf of the city and on behalf of the citizens. Also, the ideas around bringing cahoots back, sounds pretty good. And TOPA also sounds pretty good, so thank you for the time. Bye.
Thank you, Win. Our next speaker is John Doe, followed by Jeffrey Gordon. All right, not seeing a John Doe come forward, we will hear from Jeffrey Gordon, and then I will call for John Doe one more time.
Greetings, good evening. Dr. Jeffrey Gordon, Ward Seven. First, I want to say I endorse the hard work of the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association and the tenant advocates that have spoken tonight. I support the advocacy for TOPA. Now cancel the contract with Flock. Lexipol LLC offers police departments a subscription service that provides access and use rights for a pre-written policy manual containing boilerplate policy templates. Many police departments around the country will copy and modify these templates to draft their own proposed city code amendments. Lexipol LLC provides a template for ALPR usage policy, which many local police departments and thus cities have adopted. The text is nearly identical across many examples, and these documents, across many states. And these documents usually include a copyright Lexipol, LLC, date lined at the bottom of each page. By comparing the text, it is obvious that Police Chief Skinner modified this template and provided it as his own ALPR policy, looks like without the legally mandatory attribution to Lexipol. This is relevant information because Flock Safety's website advertises that it can help local police departments search for and apply for grant programs that can provide funding for their shiny new ALPR system. This website then links customers directly to a website run by Lexipol LLC that acts as the database portal providing the search service. This is a business relationship. And furthermore, Lexipol LLC runs law enforcement/news product blogs like Police One and Corrections One, which include glowing product descriptions of the various Flock products offered. If this didn't set off alarm bells for you, I don't know what will. And I emailed you all about this. Actually, I sent you two emails, check the other one. I've reviewed many different ALPR policy texts from around the country, and they are nearly identical because they are written by Lexipol. Having these nice-looking policy points in city code has not prevented police officers or federal agents from exploiting the Flock database for nefarious ends. Flock Safety Incorporated has demonstrated it is not an honest broker when it comes to disclosing how their products operate, and its service does not keep our personal information secure. So, I can't prove that Police Chief Skinner directly used a Grand Assistant Database Search Tool. However, it's obvious that he did copy the Lexipol ALPR policy and modified it slightly. By the way, any modified version of this policy is still subject to copyright. So, I don't know if he intentionally engaged in copyright infringement and a potential breach of contract, but these would be additional lawsuits incurred by his actions relating to the Flock mass surveillance apparatus. And finally, free Palestine.
Thank you, Jeffrey. One last call for John Doe. If John Doe, if you're in the room, please raise your hand. All right, moving on to our next speakers. Our next speakers are Jeff Salata, followed by Henry Boyer.
Good evening. Jeff Salata, Ward One. You'll hear a little bit of the same, but didn't know the content of the previous speaker's message. Tonight, I want to talk about governance, about we, the people, about the self-actualization of the priorities of the people of Eugene. That's us, right? That's you. The elected mayor and the elected city council of this city. But what's behind the curtain? What runs the literal machinery of this local democracy? Private corporations, it would seem. The intrusion of for-profit, private companies into the operations of city governance and public service has gone too far. Flock embodies this better than anything. And I should like remind us all that the city manager and the police chief, both of whom are unelected, unilaterally decided to install an AI-powered surveillance system owned by such a corporation without consulting or informing any of us. Furthermore, as the previous speaker mentioned, the Eugene Police Department did not write the policy on ALPR use. The language of Policy 1204, as it is known, is virtual identical, as in word for word, to that of the Florence Police Department's policy on ALPRs, the same document that carries the copyright of Lexipol LLC. So, if I'm getting this right, the policy for a private company's AI-powered surveillance system was written by a private for-profit company? On Lexipol's website, you can see the banner of the Oregon State Sheriff's Association as a stated partner. And just today, I heard on KLCC about their new contract with Flock. Two years, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. I can guarantee their policy will likewise be written by Lexipol, who has fought many a lawsuit over how their policies are intentionally vague and have resulted in profiling and generally reckless policing. Who's actually running things in this city? You? Us? Or the private corporations who are behind everything from the city's website, to the Flock cameras, to the policy of those cameras? Remember, they don't care about any of us, they only care-
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Jeff. Our next speakers are Henry Boyer, followed by Justin Philip.
Hi, I'm Henry Boyer from Ward Three. This is my first time coming here. I've been following the whole Flock camera story arc from Come From My Bed. If you're being generous, you can say I was watching from afar. If you're being accurate, you can say I was sitting on my butt. Either way, I'm here now to stand alongside all people who have been doing the actually hard work. I'm here to say no to mass surveillance, here to fight against our country's descent into a police state. You've already turned the cameras off. Thank you for that. Now it's time to take the cameras down. I ask the council to cancel the City of Eugene's contract with Flock. Until that happens, I'm going to keep coming here because this stuff is too important for me to keep lying on my butt at home. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Our next speakers are Justin Philip, followed by Kevin Cronin.
Hello, City Council and people of Eugene. My name is Justin Philip. I'm a resident of Ward Five, and I serve as the Secretary of the Pacific Green Party. I'm here today representing roughly 1,000 registered Greens in Eugene. First of all, I want to thank the other members of my community who have organized in opposition to mass surveillance here, including the Eyes Off Eugene Group, and I want to thank the council for taking these concerns seriously and for taking action to recommend their removal and turning them off. The Green Party opposes the use of mass surveillance cameras in public spaces. Mass surveillance violates privacy, disproportionately affects marginalized groups, and threatens democratic freedoms. We are concerned with public safety, but we're not willing to give up our liberties to achieve it. Benjamin Franklin is quoted as having said, "Those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety." People who do not want to be surveilled as they go about their daily lives. They don't want Big Brother watching, and they're not willing to give up their rights to privacy. They're not willing to give up their liberties. And the ACLU, an organization specifically concerned with civil liberties, is weighing in on this one, too, by filing a lawsuit against the City of Eugene. I want to acknowledge the progress that has been made on this issue and encourage the city to finish the job by canceling the contract with Flock and removing these symbols of totalitarianism from our streets. In my last few moments, since I went quickly, we want to voice our support for TOPA and for cahoots as well. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Justin. Our next speakers are Kevin Cronin, followed by Misty Bowman.
Hello, my name is Kevin Cronin. I live in Ward Seven in River Road neighborhood. I've been an advocate for affordable housing development and tenant protections for over 10 years. I'm here tonight to ask you to direct city staff to work with our community groups like Square One, CASA, and the Springfield Eugene Tenant Association to bring forward tenant opportunity to purchase. Twenty years ago this month, I survived the destruction that Hurricane Wilma brought upon my town, and I moved out here to the Northwest. Then in 2011, after being no cause evicted, I was homeless, living on my friend's porch and struggling to survive. I spent years scraping to save, and today I'm a homeowner. I'm a homeowner because I had an opportunity to purchase from one of our town's largest landlords. Since June of 2024, Eugene has had at least 17 multifamily buildings of 360 total units listed for sale with an average price of $179,000 per unit. The median listing is buildings that have 10 units. With current interest rates, these properties have been loitering on the market, some even relisting after a few months, or being repackaged with another listing. Eugene already has a condo conversion law on the books, but we've had a few projects take advantage since it's kind of from a different era. Eugene should update and improve upon that by passing a tenant opportunity to purchase. Our mayor was swept in on a mandate for middle housing. TOPA is a way for the city to empower tenants to partner with our trusted community-based organizations to convert their existing apartments into affordable, middle-housing homeownership options, or to stay as permanent affordable rental housing. This model of preservation opens up one of the most bang-for-your-buck investment opportunities with our limited affordable housing resources. It also builds on the LERTY ordinance that you passed earlier tonight so that these properties would be eligible for LERTY. Please make a motion to direct city staff to bring a TOPA framework as part of an existing future agenda item that you already have, Renter Protection Phase Three. Also, I don't really like the Flock cameras, and if you give us the go-ahead, I'll get some guys from my neighborhood. We can go take it down for you. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kevin. Our next speakers are Misty Bowman, followed by Danny Huff Smith.
What's up, guys and gals and non-binary pals? My name is Misty Bowman. I live in Ward Seven. I'm a dark sky Oregon advocate. I'm a member of the newfound Eugene Friends of the Night Sky, and I'm here to discuss light pollution. Imagine, if you will, the date is Tuesday, June 18, 1889. The place is Saint Remy de Provence. Little-known Dutch artist Vincent van Gogh writes to his dear brother Theo, "At last, I have a landscape with olive trees and also a new study of a starry sky." This unassuming sentence was the only thing he wrote to signal his as-yet unnamed masterpiece, Starry Night, was finished. This was not a painting of a religion, a philosophy, or a particularly important moment in history, but of a banal countryside night in France, and it is one of the most famous works of art in the West. This single painting has inspired so many artists and works of art. How many? I tried to find out. Edward Munch made his own nocturnal studies. Fuvio Siciliano Jr. from Sao Paulo made a tribute to Starry Night. Turkish artist Garap Ay made his own tribute with a technique called paper marbling. Octave Mirbou wrote In the Sky. Washington-based artist Andrew Litterest made their own tribute with Legos. Local Oregonian artist Judy Larson recreated it with beads. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Don McLean's Vincent, which was a favorite of Tupac Shakur's. And British artist Jake Bug heard Vincent at the end of a Simpsons episode on light pollution, and it inspired his billboard charting career. My point is this: This is one painting of one night sky, and it inspired countless works of art. Eugene is a city full of beautiful artistic souls. I've seen them here at the city council, and we are all denied that starry sky because of excessive light pollution. Even in Keesey Square, where the memorial to our own Ken Keesey stands, there is a plaque with a quote about the beauty of the stars in our sky surrounding the Oregon moon. And when I look up from that spot, I can hardly see any stars at all. I urge the city council to revise and enforce the outdoor lighting ordinance to a new ordinance guided by Dark Sky International's five principles of responsible outdoor lighting. Cancel the Flock contract and free Palestine.
Thank you, Misty. Our next speakers are Danny Huff Smith, followed by Eric Morgan.
Good evening, Council. My name is Danny Huff Smith. I'm the unofficial Council jester, so this is supposed to be a clown nose? And I think it's kind of comical that you haven't canceled the contract yet. And this is my third time singing for you on this topic, so I hope you do enjoy this episode. However, please take us seriously. Here we go. What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel the contract? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel it? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel the contract?
Danny, just one moment, please. Audience, please, nothing. Silent hands.
You, we, you already know just how dangerous it is. We've already told you that we don't want it. You already voted unanimously. We already talked this issue to death. So what's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel the contract? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel it? Woo! What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel the contract? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take? What's it gonna take to cancel it? Also, I support TOPA. I support cahoots and free Palestine. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Danny. Our next speakers are Eric Morgan, followed by Laura Ray.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and staff. My name is Eric Morgan. I'm a representative for the Western States Carpenter's Union, and I live in Ward Two. We are here tonight to speak against the 20-year tax exemption for the Lucy Apartments solely because of the lack of labor standards that are attached to the project. You know, our representatives, we go on job sites every day throughout Oregon, mainly non-union job sites, helping individuals that are victims of wage theft, tax fraud, and misclassification. You know, particularly in the affordable housing realm is where we see the most egregious of this happening. These job sites often turn into crime scenes of wage theft and immigrant labor abuse. But there are some safeguards that you guys can put into place to prevent this. I said that we go on job sites and talk to these individuals. What we find is that these carpenters, they're making anywhere from $80 to $100 a day. Most of the time, it's cash, if they're paid at all. And so some of the things that can be put in place for this 20-year tax exemption are some community benefits, like local hire, making sure that money stays locally and gives opportunity to the local workforce. Apprenticeship utilization for state-accredited apprenticeships, training the next generation of youth, and giving opportunities to the youth coming out of our CTE programs. And prevailing wage. Like I said, what we see is $80 to $100 a day. And so essentially, the people that are building these affordable housing complexes can, they're able to actually qualify to live in them. And so it creates a cycle that, as you're building affordable housing, you're creating greater need because a lot of the workforce is brought in from outside the area. There's a study called The High Cost of Low Wages, and what they found in Oregon is 43% of families and construction workers are enrolled in one or more safety net program, costing the state $710 million per year. On top of that, 22% of construction workers don't have health insurance. So some of these safeguards can help prevent that in the future.
Our next speakers are Laura Ray, followed by Andrew Becker.
Hello, my name is Laura Ray, and I live in Ward One. I appreciate the City Council and Mayor for listening to the voices of Eugene residents here. I am very concerned about the Flock cameras that have been installed around Eugene. I do not consent to having detailed information about my vehicle recorded and entered into a mass database. I believe that all community members here who care about privacy and who don't want to live in a world where we are constantly surveilled should be very concerned about these cameras. Information from Flock cameras has already been seriously misused in other communities, resulting in harm and a definite lack of safety for community members, and there is so much potential for continued abuse going forward. I urge the City Council and Mayor to listen to your constituents, value the privacy of our community members, and remove this mass surveillance tool from Eugene. Let's not just jump on the bandwagon for mass surveillance. Thank you for hearing the concerns of so many Eugene residents that are here tonight who are opposed to the Flock cameras. Please think carefully about how we are using technology, the values that you stand for, and the direction our community is heading. I urge you to remove the Flock cameras immediately and terminate the contract with Flock.
Thank you, Laura. Our next speakers are Andrew Becker, followed by Scott Lambert.
Hi there, Andrew Becker, Ward Seven. Madam Mayor, tonight you opened things up with a land acknowledgement, and I think it's important to realize why we would do something like that. It's because people were displaced from the homes that they lived in, you know. There were people that lived here, and they were forced out. And in the same way, you know, people that live at the Eugene Hotel were forced out when the Napoli Partners, some East Coast private equity firm, came in and jacked up their rent to the maximum allowable amount every year. So I think it's really important that, you know, we try to curtail the commodification of housing and find solutions to make sure that people aren't displaced from their homes again, and again, and again, and again, and again. You know, when we can do something like TOPA, that's, you know, small fix around the edges, wouldn't really cost the city anything, I think that's just a smart choice. Second off, you know, when it comes to Flock, I also think that, you know, listening to the police chief on October 8th, I heard some things that sounded a little bit like fibs, you know. He said that the cameras, you know, only captured pictures. They're not video-enabled. Well, Flock advertises on their website that with no new installation required, flip of a switch, if you upgrade your package, oh, suddenly they're video-enabled now. So, you know, that's when he said, oh, don't worry, you know, just pictures, just license plates. That's not exactly accurate. That's not what they advertise the capability of their cameras as on their own website. Same thing when it comes to AI. You know, he said, oh, well, yeah, we use AI license plate recognition, but you can't use facial recognition or anything like that on these cameras. Well, again, Flock advertises on their own website that if you upgrade your package with them and spend more money, they're suddenly AI facial recognition-enabled. And that doesn't even really matter because you can use facial recognition software on the backend on any picture taken on any camera in the entire world at any time. So, you know, it just kind of rubbed me the wrong way, the way he presented, and, you know, he was never questioned on stuff like that. I think that Flock is obviously a mistake. TOPA is a good thing, and don't hire scab labor for tax-exempt properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Our next speakers are Scott Lambert, followed by Brennan Fitzgerald.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor. My name is Scott Lambert. I'm a resident of Ward Two, a PhD candidate in physics at the University of Oregon, and a member of GTFF Local 3544. So, like, I'm politically active. I still divert around the Flock cameras even though they're turned off because I have no way of knowing if they're actually off or not. They're still there. They need to go. I am pretty confident that Donald Trump would love to lock me up. So reading from an article about the ACLU's case against Flock, it says that Flock's default agreement with police departments give the company "the right to share data with federal and local agencies for quote-unquote investigative purposes, even if a local department chooses to restrict data to its own officers." That gives me a great deal of pause. So I request the council to terminate the contract and remove the cameras immediately. I further propose that all mass surveillance, mass public surveillance, be made illegal in the City of Eugene, and that the unelected positions of city manager and chief of police be eliminated and replaced with democratically-elected committees accountable to the people of this city. The unilateral decision to install a mass surveillance system without any democratic mandate shows that these positions are weak links in our democratic governance and susceptible to pressure from an unaccountable corporation. It should have never been possible to install these cameras at all, let alone by an unelected In addition, I support TOPA, and I want to say free Palestine. I will say free Palestine. I'll also say that the mass surveillance system that is currently installed in our city bears a lot of resemblance to some of the mass surveillance systems that the Israeli state uses to limit the movements and restrict the freedoms of Palestinians. Please cancel the contract, and do not ever let something like this happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Our next speakers are Brennan Fitzgerald, followed by Josh Easterland.
Hello, my name is Brennan Fitzgerald. I'm also a graduate student at the University of Oregon and a member of the Graduate Teaching Fellows Federation, but I'm speaking to you as a resident of Eugene. I live in Ward Two, and I urge you in the strongest terms to cancel Flock now. There used to be a Flock camera in the park by my house. It didn't make me feel safer. It actually made me worry about what information it might be capturing, information that could be used to justify the incarceration or deportation of my neighbors. Nothing good comes from mass surveillance of citizens, especially right now when the US government is becoming increasingly fascist, particularly with the attacks on immigrants, people of color, and trans people like myself. Just because Flock, or just because the EPD claims that Flock is not going to work with the federal government, does not mean that that's going to happen as we know the federal government is not really feeling itself bound by the rules of law or what other people say right now. I truly believe that the information it captures will, at some point in Eugene, be used to crack down on the most marginalized among us. will, at some point in Eugene, be used to crack down on the most marginalized among us, whether that crackdown comes from DHS, ICE, or any other government agency. Please understand when I say, I feel safer without Flock cameras in my neighborhood. I really do appreciate that y'all have turned the cameras off. Now I am urging you to cancel Flock for good and remove the cameras from the streets. I also urge you to get workers like Kahoots back, providing the indispensable services that make our city safe, and I am in support of the tenant option to purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Brennan. Our next speakers are Josh Easterland, followed by Viola Bolton Lum.
Hello, city councilors. I'm Josh Easterland, Director of Equitable Access Eugene, Ward Eight, asking to decriminalize psychedelic plants and fungi. Before I continue reading the resolution, I just wanted to share about a great loss in our community, the co-creator of both the Edelec Center for Ethnobotanical Studies as well as Equitable Access Eugene, a husband, father, and friend of many, James Franzo, passed away recently. He was incredibly brilliant and kind. Several of you met with him. We're having a celebration of life for him on Saturday, November eighth, at 1:00 PM at the Trauma Healing Project, Nineteenth Patterson. He helped draft the resolution. I've been reading these past few public comment periods, and hopefully the eventual passage of which will be one of his many legacies. So I got through all the, you know, the whereas portions, and now we're to the resolve. So be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby declare that it shall be the policy of the city of Eugene that no department, agency, board, or commission officer or employee of the city, including without limitation the Eugene Police Department personnel, shall use city funds or resources to investigate, arrest, prosecute, or allocate resources to assist in the enforcement of laws imposing criminal penalties for the use, possession, or cultivation of entheogenic plants by adults, natural persons twenty-one years of age or older, and that no conduct herein shall constitute the basis for detention, search, seizure, arrest, or other legal penalty, including the possession, use, cultivation, production, sharing, giving away, transporting, and delivery of entheogenic plants. And be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby declare that it shall be the policy of the city of Eugene that no department, agency, board, commission, officer, or employee of the city, including without limitation the Eugene Police Department personnel, shall use city funds or resources to investigate, arrest, prosecute individuals, or allocate city funds or resources to assisting the enforcement of laws imposing criminal penalties for the use of paraphernalia designed for the use of cultivation, production, storage, or use of entheogenic plants by natural persons twenty-one years of age or older. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city council hereby declare that the investigation and arrest of adult persons for gathering, planting, cultivating, gifting, distributing, transporting, or engaging in practices with and/or processing entheogenic plants or plant compounds shall be among the lowest law enforcement priorities. I'll keep going next time. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Josh. Our next speakers are Viola Bolton Lum, followed by Jacob Tru.
Hi, I'm Viola. I live south of campus. I don't know what ward that is. I'm sorry. So obviously, Flock is, it's bad. It's bad for the city. It makes me feel in danger all the day, every day, all the time. But I'm also, I heard something really curious tonight about it, the fact that the city pays a subscription fee, does not own the hardware, has to pay for a replacement, and is on the hook for any legal fees that Flock incurs. And if a friend described that arrangement to me, you know, over the dinner table, like they signed a contract with a company, like, I don't know, whatever, that would sound like a scam. The city of Eugene is being scammed by Flock, and I am shocked and appalled that the city manager and police chief could just walk us into this arrangement without any oversight. Thank you. TOPA sounds good also, I guess.
Thank you, Viola. Our next speakers are Jacob Tru, followed by Andrew Simran.
Hi there. I'm Jacob Tru from Ward One. I want to talk a little bit about the work session today, just now. Evans, Groves, Clark, and Keating all voted to send an ordinance to a public hearing criminalizing passing money or goods to people on the side of the road. Four other councilors opposed, and I'm summarizing here, so I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but because we have much greater public safety concerns, there's no indication of this actually increasing, of this practice actually increasing any traffic incidents. And this issue's been brought up several times in the last several years, and it's been rejected each time. Folks familiar with the city council know that four-four is a tie, but Mayor Karen Knudsen broke this tie in order of scheduling a public hearing. I just want to say that of all the public safety priorities that we have facing us, number one in my mind is the lack of Kahoots. We're coming up on six months now. The Budget Committee passed a measure that by the end of October, we'd have a presentation from the city manager about how we'd fund two-point-five million dollars' worth of alternative response funding, such as Kahoots, including from the community safety payroll tax. We have no more city council sessions scheduled through the end of October, so it appears that that has not been followed, and I'm disappointed to see that. We do have a work session coming up that has not been decided on November tenth. So if there is any plan for the dire lack of Kahoots services planned for in the immediate future, I would like to know as soon as possible. Our community, the workers, the Kahoots workers, you know, former, stand ready. WVCC, we've been preparing them, they're all ready to go. Six months without, you know, remuneration, though. We're facing the loss of quite a few people. So any sort of indication from the city council that y'all intend to stick with, stick with getting Kahoots back on the roads would be greatly appreciated. Love any indication from anybody, city manager, city council, to see if y'all still support the nationally-recognized and keeps getting called out in mayoral elections across the country, and people keep following it. It just seems a real shame that we've, we've lost it here in Eugene. And right now, it doesn't look like we're on track to get it back. I'd really like to see it back in Eugene. So, thank you now.
Thank you, Jacob. Our next speakers are Andrew Simran, followed by JoJo Breslin.
Good evening, mayor, council, and city manager. My name is Andrew Simran. I reside in River Road neighborhood. I'm here to speak against Flock safety. I'm pleased to hear that the cameras have been paused. But I do think that the council needs to cancel the contract because it's not in the public interest. We have heard that many people feel unsafe with these cameras installed, and even if they are supposedly paused, I think it's important that we immediately cancel the contract and instead focus on something like Kahoots or Willamette Valley Crisis Care that can help with public safety response from our limited police resources. I also wanted to say that we need climate action now, and that the Climate Recovery Ordinance still needs a lot of work, and that we need to be more aggressive in reducing our greenhouse gas emissions across all sectors, including housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Andrew, our next speakers are JoJo Breslin, followed by Austin Fulnagy.
Good evening, city councilors and mayor. I'm JoJo Breslin, I'm a resident of Ward Two. I kind of just want to talk today a little bit. I work in healthcare. I work in cancer care here in Eugene. And since the closure of the University District Hospital on December first, 2023, you know, it's been almost nightmarish a lot, like every week to hear about the care that people get. We don't have a hospital in our city limits, so it forces folks from West Eugene to go over the Belt Line all the way to go to Riverbend, or they're going to McKenzie Willamette. It's hard. Every week, there are horror stories that are disheartening. And hearing more things happening in our community, like Pacific Source pulling out of OHP, leaving about ninety thousand people potentially uninsured to go to Trillium or who knows where, kind of just putting some, you know, context for where we're at healthcare-wise here in Eugene. I know that none of this is really lost on you all here. There's been lots of discussions about trying to find alternatives and solutions to those. With that being said, I think a major one that can be put forth by this council that doesn't involve like our for-profit healthcare system that goes way beyond what this chamber can do is putting in an RFP for Willamette Valley Crisis Care and trying to get Kahoots back on the streets. By getting people care where they are at and not clogging up our hospital systems or our urgent cares, it can really do a ton of help and get people what they need immediately. And to also just make sure that we are taking care of our community in the best ways and standards forward. It is absolutely amazing to see Zoran Landani name drop Eugene and Kahoots, but it was very sad thinking about where we are at here currently. So that's my plea to you all today. TOPA sounds amazing. We should have more rent protections and services or ability to buy, as well as the Flock cameras. Since I have some time left, I'll just say that, you know, I've heard about the concerns of the cost to point out of the contract. I think that that just kind of goes to show that the ability for the police chief and the city manager to come through with the contract unilaterally, and now we have to like have a cost associated to that, if that is the case, just kind of shows like the lack of oversight for that kind of contract to come in place in the first place. So, thank you all.
Thank you, JoJo. Our next speakers are Austin Fulnagy, followed by Rob Sheldon.
Mayor, city council. For the record, my name is Austin Fulnagy. And originally, I was here to talk about TOPA, but I also wanted to stand in solidarity with our community about removing Flock, the hardware, and canceling the contract. I also want to stand in solidarity with our carpenters, sisters and brothers. With carpenters build communities. While I'm at it, I support people singing "The Night Sky" and singing during public comment. Once again, my name's Austin Fulnagy. Although I live upriver in Vida, Oregon, I do have rental properties here in the city of Eugene. And my direct experience with the local rental market informs my strong support of TOPA. TOPA is a proven community-oriented mechanism that warrants adoption here in Eugene. We've talked about proven concepts throughout Lane County. I want to shout out to Vitale Berg Manufactured Home Park. And overall, like, the main concerns I have with all of this is in regards to two concepts. First off, we want to build a bigger and better community. We want to be able to renovate our existing homes, create higher quality of homes and so forth. We've heard from about Washington DC, and we saw success there with TOPA in seeing nearly seventy-eight percent of units involved in those sales were slated for substantial renovations and repair. That creates a, not only a direct, directly addresses concerns regarding quality and longevity of existing housing, but that benefits the community as a whole. And I hope that council members who are a little hesitant about supporting TOPA can consider that, that these type of things benefit all of us, to be able to have a quality stock of housing available to the community, as well as the democracy that it brings to our housing community. Additionally, I am really concerned about the escalating influence of REITs, real estate investment trusts. These are powerful financial interests that are acquiring alarming and rapidly increasing portion of American housing supply. And unfortunately, they don't invest into the communities like smaller landlords and property owners do. We invest in our community. We spend time in our community. But this is a very huge concern for me, that REITs from outside of our community are taking up our housing, taking away opportunities for our community to have housing and affordable housing within it. I urge the city council to recognize TOPA as an essential tool in market stabilization, housing quality improvements, and community empowerment.
Thank you, Austin. Our next and final speaker is Rob Sheldon.
Good evening, Rob Sheldon. Regarding Flock, we're still asking for the cameras to be physically removed and for the contract to be terminated as its language allows. Earlier today, we heard from another community member for the first time who contacted us to find out if there was currently a plan in progress to get them removed. I understand this might take a little while. In the meantime, people would be reassured if the cameras were physically covered. Back in June, with my first comments about the dangers of Flock in our community, I could not have anticipated everything that would unfold over the next few months. If I had one regret about how everything has happened so far, it would be that this subject has taken some of the air out of the room for other issues that people here care a lot about. So tonight, I would like to voice my support for one of those issues. I met earlier today with someone that's been working to get Willamette Valley Crisis Care active in our community. It sounds like the holdup right now is an RFP from the city. They sound a little befuddled at the delay in getting that process started. If that is underway, or if there's something else holding it up, I think it would be good to let the folks at WVCC know. I think we all recognize that there are tough times ahead. More people are going to be adding demand on city services soon. Calls for police service are going to increase. A significant portion of these are calls that WVCC could handle in the city. The time to prepare your home is before the storm hits. The city is clearly juggling multiple urgent matters. Maybe Flock has contributed to the delays in moving WVCC forward. I hope not. But what lies ahead is not the easy days, it is the hard days. We are all going to need to juggle more and more urgent matters going forward. So tonight, I ask the city to please communicate a plan, options for moving forward, and a timeline to WVCC, and keep this moving forward while we continue working on getting Flock out of our community. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you, Rob. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, everyone. I now close the public comment period and see Council Evans, Council Evans in the queue.
Again, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out, who spoke tonight, and even for those of you who didn't get a chance to speak, who spoke in support of a variety of issues that were raised this evening. The first thing, I've got a question going to the Assistant City Manager. When are we scheduled to have the conversation about Phase Three renter protections? And in that conversation, are we, can we, are we going to incorporate TOPA into that? If not, then I'd like to see us, you know, begin to, or I would like to float a work session poll so that we can have that conversation. Or can we be inclusive of TOPA in the Phase Three conversations?
Council Evans, I'm going to invite Will Doughty to come up and answer your questions. I think he can do a really great job of being pretty comprehensive.
Hello, council. Will Doughty, Community Development Director. The plan that we have been working on for renter protections is to bring back a third phase. That was what we had told you, you know, at the beginning, we laid out the three phases. You've provided some comment on the flow of those, of the items in those phases. But our plan all along has been to bring you those items and in the sequence that we have provided. However, as council, you can make direction for us to go in a different order or for us to bring other items in. So that is something that council can do. It's not part of our plan, but that's something certainly that you can add.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Will, but we have had conversations on Phase One and Phase Two.
Correct.
So when are we scheduled to have the conversation on Phase Three?
The next thing that we are working on bringing you is a report on the implementation of Phase Two. Well, it would be a report on the implementation of Phases One and Two, marking, I think, two years' worth of time having Phase Two in operation. We're working on bringing you that in the first half of 2026. Following that, our plan has been to bring you Phase Three. And that would begin with exploratory conversation about what's possible, and then we would do more work to bring that back to you. So the plan is probably mid to late 2026 that we would be coming back for Phase Three.
Can you note that, I don't think that, can we have as part of the Phase Three discussion a discussion on TOPA?
We can certainly, we can certainly prepare that for you, and then we could open that door for you. And then I think the inclusion of an item, that's something that I think we would look to city manager, but I think we'd probably end up looking for a council direction with some sort of vote about whether that's included in part of our formal investigation. But I think in the conversation that we have about that, we'll have that opportunity for councilors to consider whether you want to add that to the list or not.
So, city manager, would be required to put forth a work session poll on TOPA to be included in Phase Three conversations?
I'll speak to it. Well, if you can answer specifically, as I recall, the Phase Three package, the packages were actually voted on as proposals. Is that correct?
I believe, yeah, I believe that's right.
So it wouldn't be a separate work session. What you What you, what you would want is, as part of, you would need to vote to change the package that you, you as a council already gave that policy direction on, and so how that comes forward to you, maybe it could come forward as part of the Phase Two work that we give you an opportunity to change the direction for the Phase Three work, but you had numerous discussions on this and gave policy direction, so it wouldn't be a work session kind of overlaying on top of it. You'd want to adjust your policy direction as a body.
So you would advise us making that adjustment in the Phase Two portion?
I don't know. I, I don't want to speak out of hand if maybe there's an opportunity to do that.
As you come back with the report on Phase Two?
Yeah, I think that's what we can do. We can, we can tell you that as we come back to, to talk about Phase Three, before that, we can give you an opportunity to, to insert that policy decision that you want us to explore, this item or other items.
I appreciate that. That's the roundabout way of getting to answer my question, but that's, that's what I would, personally, as a counselor, would like to see that included in the report back on Phase, on Phase Two, and then how we would incorporate that either, either in Phase Two, or as we are discussing the next step of implementing Phase Three. So that's one piece. The next question that I have is related to Counselor Clark. Thank you, Counselor Clark, for indicating that we need to have a conversation about priority, about Action Three on our priorities before we pass the consent calendar, second consent, or actually, the first consent calendar, I'm sorry, I'm getting my consent calendars confused. Adoption of the LERTD for the Lucy Apartments. I'm recognizing that we, I'll have to take a second round, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Council President, I was very interested to hear what your thoughts were on, on the LERTD for, for the Lucy. I greatly appreciate members of Local 541 joining us tonight. I would like to hear more about the contractor with whom the city is proposing, receive that said tax exemption. So it might be a little premature for this body to make a decision tonight. I appreciate you bringing to light some of the issues revolving around prevailing wage, apprenticeship utilization, and local hiring in particular. Now, State Representative Lisa Fragola and I, at the time when we were on the LCC Board, passed one of the most robust community benefits agreements in the state, and I would love to see a similar PLA, Project Labor Agreement, or Community Benefits Agreement embraced at the municipal level. So thank you for, for bringing that to, to the community's attention tonight. Thank you to the range of folks who spoke up tonight. I greatly appreciate the finer points about Dark Sky and my favorite painting. There are multiple versions of Starry Night throughout our house, my wife's favorite painting as well. And I thank, I thank folks for your enthusiasm around, around Flock. I normally wouldn't single out one person in this manner, but to, to the gentleman that, that came at us with so much ire, not just this week, but in previous weeks, nobody here wants to take away your vote, and nobody here hates you. And, and since I was singled out and pointed out, and I think called a clown, you may have seen some of my most memorable Shakespearean performances as Shakespeare's The Fool in King Lear, or The Constable Dogberry in Much Ado About Nothing, some of his greatest clown creations. But to answer your question point blank, the Oregon Secretary of State site has a most transparent system of reporting financial transactions to campaigns. The Political Action Committee that you alluded to raised $18,691 in calendar year 2024, and they now are sitting on $7,299. If you'd like to learn more, you're welcome to go to the Oregon Secretary of State website or STAR for more campaign finance information. Thank you, Mayor. I look forward to having a larger conversation around TOPA, finding ways to, to explore how we can have a new CAHoots, Coots 2.0 with Willamette Valley Crisis Cares, and of course, I think everyone in this room knows where I stand on Flock. Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Yeh.
Yeah, thank you. And Danny, I was going to share that, so if you need some help getting on the site, I'm happy to talk to you. I know you're from my ward. I'm happy to help you get that information if you need it. Thanks for sharing that, Counselor Keating. I wanted to just also add to Counsel Evans, I'm also in support of TOPA getting on our Phase Three, if we can do that. Sounds like he's got the ball rolling, but I just wanted to make sure it was obvious it wasn't just Counsel Evans, that there's multiple ones of us who are also interested. And just take the opportunity to thank everyone for coming out tonight.
Counselor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. And I too want to add my voice to thanking all of you for raising your voice here tonight. As far as TOPA, I'm interested in that as well. I met with Kevin Cronin, one of the people who testified tonight some time ago. I thought it was a good idea then, I think it's a good idea now. I'm all for owner occupied units. It's one of the few ways the average Jill and Joe can amass a level of personal wealth that can carry them into the future. And, you know, I know a lot of people have to rent, some people prefer to rent and not being tied down, but we need to give people those options so that they can have owner occupied units and build up equity for themselves, their families, and their futures. Alternative response, I know you probably don't have the detailed answers now, but is that something we could get an update on? Because it does feel like it's just kind of hanging out there, and I know it's, it's more involved, and I know we're doing some things right now. I know the fire department's working on it, I know LCSO's working on it, but I don't understand how all of those connect, and I'd like to know what we are doing, so.
Are you specifically speaking to kind of the alternative responses regarding the mobile crisis, mobile, mobile crisis response changes?
Yes, and, you know, including CAHoots or CAHoots-like service.
That is in progress, and Chief Kaven is leading that effort and working on pulling all of that information together.
Right, yeah. Even if we could just get a short email on it, kind of where we are on that, I mean, so we all are on the same page. I assume my colleagues are interested in that. And then, okay, great, thank you. And I realize I didn't give you a chance to answer. And then the last piece too, I'm, I'm interested in what we're going to be talking about next, and my understanding of what we did earlier, Counselor Evans, Council President, is that we just pulled that one item off, and we did pass consent calendar, but we're coming back for that specific item. And I, I am very interested in, you know, how we pay and provide living wages to people. The other half of affordable housing, as we all know, are living wage jobs, and whatever we can do to create those or help support the ones we have, I think those are things we need to be paying attention to, and those are things that we can help with, at least in part. So creating housing, but also creating and taking care of our people who build and put things together. Thank you very much, that's all I have.
Counselor Leach.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everyone who came out tonight. I really enjoyed the breadth of topics that we got to listen to tonight, and I loved the camaraderie amongst all of our speakers. It is my understanding that our City Manager is actually going to be sending us, councilors, a memo about the alternative response by the end of this week, and I am looking forward to hearing that information, as you are all. I also very much support the tenant opportunity to purchase, and including that in our Phase Three protections. And I want to thank the advocates that I met with last week that provided a lot more information, so I was prepared for this meeting, to be able to make sure that we are able to include that in our renter protections process, but I, I have heard that that, there is a process for that, and we will, we will keep on it. Thank you to our carpenter union. I really appreciate your perspective on this particular project. Thank you for coming tonight. I think that this warrants a broader conversation about all of our incentive programs, about MPT, about LERTD, and making sure that that's outlined as a, you know, necessary component for these applications. I believe I'm, I'm going to be passing through this particular project today, but I really think that we need to look at this as a broader, a bigger, broader issue. So again, thank you for being here, and I think that, and of course, Flock, thank you for continuing to come, thank you for continuing to voice your opinions. I keep learning more information every single week, all of your emails, I'm reading them, and we are, we are doing this. We are here with you together. We're learning more, and, and I look forward to our next work session where we can take that next step, so, thank you all.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you too to the carpenters union folks who showed up so you could help us take a breath and take a look at this LERTD application a little bit more closely to make sure that it's in the community's interest. Mayor, I mean, Manager, can you remind me of the applicant on that application? I don't have my agenda in front of me, I apologize.
Hi, Counselor Clark. Laura Hammond with Community Development. The applicant for the Lucy Apartments is-
Community?
The Lucy Apartments LLC, which is wholly owned by Cornerstone Community Housing.
This is an organization that I've had an opportunity to work with over time as well, and I, is there a, excuse me, I apologize, Laura, is there a, is there a deadline on this application?
Yes, sir, there is. They, there's a 60-day deadline from when we receive the application, and this applicant is also trying to reach financial closing by October 29th, which is when-
So we, so we either have to agree to it, or we have to screw up their project. Is that it?
I can't speak to what the implications would be of not approving it at this time, but we did try and make sure to get it to you before they were going to close for their finances. They, they have not started construction yet, so.
To the attorney, would you like to offer, I can see you wanting to say something.
There's just, there's two different deadlines, and, and one of them is apparently their desire to close on the 29th, but the, the 60-day deadline is not concurrent to the 29th. There's a 60-day deadline that is set in statute and in code by which you need to act by, and that's November 11th, I believe, so there is more-
We have another Monday night before then?
You do, on November 10th.
I want to have a full airing of, and discussion of this, as well as the benefits of the Affordable Housing Project itself, so I kind of want to make a motion to postpone a discussion on this. I'm going to wait till the mayor brings it back to a backup, and then we'll figure out a better option. Thank you.
Counselor Koschinsky.
Yes, thank you for everyone who came out to, to speak tonight, and I too am looking forward to continued discussions about the TOPA. I want to get a little bit of clarity, because I wasn't quite sure with the comments surrounding the Lucy, whether the concern was that this particular developer who was receiving this particular award had engaged in labor practices that were illegal or problematic, or whether it was more a general concern with the criteria for awarding LERTDs, and I know you, you may not know, but.
Thank, thank you, Counselor. Yeah, I can't speak to that specifically. I can say that, you know, we would be happy to talk with folks from the, the organization to understand their concerns, of whether it is specific to a particular developer or practice, and also to have that broader conversation about the community benefits surrounding LERTD.
Okay, yeah, and I want to, I want to note that, that it looks like, according to our packet, council has already awarded, either council or the city in general has already awarded almost a million dollars to this project, is that correct?
Correct, we have awarded Affordable Housing Trust Funds, SDC exemptions, and CDF assistance.
Okay. So I think, I think, I feel very different, like, I understand that a lot of these things, and thank you, Counselor Clark, for asking about timeline. I think that was very important information to have, as to what the timeline was. I think there's almost two separate discussions. One is surrounding criteria for LERTD in general, because according to the staff report, the exemption, the criteria that's in our code currently, it's a different conversation if we think that there's a concern that's being expressed with this particular developer. And so I want to make sure that when we're having that conversation, we're clarifying, I'm not interested in holding up a development for a broad policy conversation, but that's, that's a little bit of a question I have there, so.
Counselors Alenka and then Counselor Evans.
Yes, thanks. Just for clarity's sake, the motion that I made at the Budget Committee was to have the City Manager do an investigation into CAHoots and Coots-like services and bring that back to us by the end of October. It was not to have a work session. So apparently, the, the City Manager is going to bring us back a report this week, which would be by the end of October, which is Friday. So the work session would follow that information, so we wanted to, the thought in my head was always, let's get the information and then have a discussion, so, and I think that's the path we're going on. I'm sure we'll have a follow-up conversation about that information that we get from the City Manager. All the people that came out for Flock, thank you again for coming out. I'm in favor of getting rid of them. I wish it were that simple. There's more work to do in that, that area, so stay, stay engaged. Carpenters, thank you for coming out tonight, expressing your concern. Wasn't clear to me exactly what you were asking for, it seemed to me that you were asking for a general policy discussion around protections, as opposed to a specific problem with this specific contractor on this specific project. And if it was the, the latter, that's, that's more problematic, but if it's a general concern about the policy and wanting us to implement better protections through policies, and making sure all those things that you said are covered, including the prevailing wage and all the other laws, then, then that's a broader conversation about the policy. And, and I'd hate to see this project get derailed because of that policy discussion that may or may not be exactly relevant to this particular project. Have we ever given a LERTD to Cornerstone? And Cornerstone's morphed from-
Sure.
Metro, so maybe we can give that history, and their long history of doing affordable housing projects.
Thank you, Counselors Alenka. Yes, Cornerstone Community Housing has been in our community for decades, and they were formerly Metropolitan Housing Association, I think, is the name.
Metro.
Yeah, Metro. They have multiple units within Eugene. They do have a number of developments that are currently receiving the LERTD, which actually is used more as an operating cost to keep the costs lower by allowing rents to be lower by, through that exemption. I'll also just add that there is a statewide exemption for affordable housing on prevailing wage developments, and that is through statewide, so that is something-
And the Lucy project hasn't been built yet, it's still-
Correct, they're working on getting their permits very hard right now.
Do they have, have they picked a contractor to build it?
I assume they have, yes. I don't know the name of the contractor, I'd have to look that up, yeah.
Counselor Evans.
Yeah, to follow up, and Counselors Alenka and Counselors Clark, I know you were here well before me, and remember the project on 13th and Olive, that the firm from Alabama came up here and said, "We can't build that without having these specific tax breaks." And council went on and passed that because the need for developing- And council went on and passed that because the need for development for housing, particularly student housing at that time, am I correct about that? And the, the workers that were brought here, were brought from outside of the community, if I remember correctly, and prevailing wage was not paid at that time. And I have a problem with giving tax breaks to developers who are not paying prevailing wage. So I'm not going to be supportive of this, except to say that if Counselor Clark wants to make a motion to pause this until we have a conversation as a council about this, because this is the moral equivalent of you holding a gun to my head and said, "I've got to pass this before the 29th, or this is not going to work for me." No, I'm not doing that. I do not work that way. So I don't, I can't speak for the rest of council, but no, we need to have prevailing wage paid to all of the workforce that's going to be working on a publicly funded project, partly funded project. If you're asking for tax breaks, then you got to play by our rules too.
Counselors Alenka.
Yeah, that was a MPT project, and that particular project resulted in a two-year moratorium on the MPT project, where we took it apart and put it back together, and required that all MPT projects after that abide by all rules and had some community benefits packages included in that, as well as energy efficiency and other things in it that made the MPT project a lot, have real substantial substantive community benefits. LRTD is a different type of thing. We have awarded this year, I think, numerous LRTDs already, and the broader conversation about the rules around that is a good question, Counselor Evans, and, and, and I'm more than willing to have that, because I helped lead the reform of the MPT, as you well know. And so having that conversation doesn't happen quickly, and I doubt it will happen by the time we need to make this, this, this project 60-day window. So we might be able to find out some more information about what the carpenters are talking about, but we're not going to be able to resolve all the issues. So, and we've already done a whole bunch of LRTDs before this one came up, and before the carpenters brought this forward. So I think it's a broader issue than that, that's not going to be resolved super quickly.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say quite a bit of what Counselors Alenka said, except the part where George Brown and I did most of the MPT revisions and that, to make it work right, that's another thing altogether, we'll leave that aside. The, the difference here, Counselor Evans, at least from my standpoint, I will say, is that Cornerstone Community Housing is an organization that has been doing phenomenal work in our community for a very long time, and I, I understand your concern, but I will, from what I heard the carpenters' union representative talk about, I too am concerned with what was said, and looking at a policy that covers that, and I agree with those goals, but we don't know that those two are connected on this policy, or on this particular project. I, I don't know that I heard him say, "This project isn't paying prevailing wage," or "This project is one that there is an objection to." So I, I would just urge you not to make that connection here with this vote that does have a timing issue and is a low-income housing opportunity in our community that's desperately needed right now, so. I, I too want to work towards a better policy for LRTD, because if we're, if we're extending community tax incentives, we're getting a community good out of low-income housing being built, but we also want to make sure that the people who are doing the work to build it are taken care of justly and fairly and compensated appropriately. So we need to have a conversation about that policy. Thank you.
I've added myself to the queue, which is a little bit unusual in this moment in time, but I would like to add a couple of thoughts. One, appreciation to Local 541 for coming this evening to give public comment and share concerns. I also want to make the very obvious point that there is, is no policy in place with this city or this body that in any way allows for wage theft to be something that is a part of what people should be experiencing. So that's not a discussion point as something that we would support or not support. Wage theft is a serious allegation and something that we should be engaged with resolving in our community for likely the subcontractors who are the victims of that circumstance. That's a real power dynamic imbalance within sometimes complex process, but I want to highlight that the Affordable Housing Organization, Cornerstone Community Housing, that's proposing this project, has been through at least a couple of rounds of pretty intensive public oversight and review, with two years of review of an extensive pro forma at the Affordable Housing Trust Funds Community Advisory Committee. All of this information, in terms of what we are expecting of this relationship, is publicly accessible through the Affordable Housing Trust Funds information, and I think we do have an important conversation to have about how community benefits are delivered with the work that we are doing as a community every day to meet our housing crisis. But I just wanted to, to slow us down a little bit in terms of the number of different policies and incentive programs that were coming together in this discussion, and also the differences in concerns, because we did hear from staff, and staff, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the podium, could you please clarify what you stated about the statewide exemption related to affordable housing and prevailing wage?
Yes. All affordable housing developments in the state of Oregon do have an exemption from prevailing wage at the state level.
And so as a clarifying comment, there's still work that could happen at the local level around our labor standards and decisions, but that is an existing context in this discussion and is a separate issue also from, as I mentioned, the very serious allegation of wage theft, and also, I believe, what was another description of, of serious labor violations. When that's happening locally, what is our point of interface as a community? How do we address that kind of a circumstance?
You know, we, we would welcome folks coming to us if they're having concerns, especially about affordable housing development that this city is involved with. We would clearly take those concerns very seriously and work with our partners here and in the state to address them as quickly as possible.
Thank you. Counselor Yeh is next in the queue. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and you actually brought up what I was going to say. Maybe staff could stay up, just sorry. I'm so sorry.
That's okay, my bad, my bad.
So, yeah, so I think it's, like the mayor said, I think, you know, these illegal activities are very concerning, right? So I'm wondering, do we have anything in place that would, you know, detect something like this? And if so, you know, what would be then the response that the city would do?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Yeh. We do monitor our, all of our affordable housing developments. Some of the developments received a more monitoring, depending on the level of city subsidy that they're getting, but we are monitoring them, we're doing site visits regularly, we're following up with rental reports on an annual basis. So we are following them pretty closely throughout both the construction phase and their affordability phase, once they're in construction and being rented.
So what does a site visit entail? Like, you just ask people, "Hey, are you getting paid?" Like, you know?
Yeah. Well, I would, I would probably have to have a more, a conversation with the folks who do the site visits to give you more details on that, but we could certainly bring back that information for you.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Evans.
Don't go away.
I think we'll-
Can I add to that last one? The, the state is the primary agency in charge of labor law, so it's the state that we ultimately defer to and rely on, so we rely on issues being reported to the state. We were, state whatever process they have for monitoring, auditing, site visits, and then also for the penalties, especially in case of crime.
So that's, that is, that's state law and not local law, and so we defer to the state to be the ones to monitor and enforce that.
So do we, so if a local, for example, if Cornerstone had an allegation made, or they've, you know, the state found that something was happening, like, you know, wage theft, would you then get notified? And then, would you notify us so that we would know for making decisions later on?
So what, we would, the, the things that we would do, we would, so if someone reported that to us, we would encourage them to report that directly to the state. We would also pass that on to the state if we had reason to think that, you know, that this was something that was important. And then, and then, I guess that would go into our decision-making in the future for these kinds of things. For, for LRTD, where it is a, it's, you know, the council's asked to make a decision based on whether the project meets the criteria. I don't know, I don't know if past issues are criteria, no. So the, so the code that we have is one where we're asking you to approve it based on whether it meets the criteria, or no, because it doesn't, and specifically call out which criteria it doesn't meet.
So do we know if there have been issues with Cornerstone?
Not, none that I'm aware of.
And that's because there are none, or we haven't checked?
I don't think we have checked. I don't think we've proactively checked that.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Evans and staff coming to the podium, thank you.
I just wanted to add that on, on our projects, before they start construction, we do a debarment check with the construction board, the state board on licensing, to make sure that all the contractors are licensed. But that is where they register past complaints, so we have that information, if there are past complaints in the past 10 years. But unless they're debarred, so they've gone through the state process, if they've corrected their actions, and they've proved to the state that they have corrected their actions, and they're not debarred, and they can work on our projects.
So again, question would be, because of state law with regard to LRTD projects, prevailing wage is exempted. Am I correct?
Thank you, Counselor. Yes, and I want to make one adjustment, it's with up to four stories high. So if they are above five, five stories, they would have to pay prevailing wage.
And remind me again, how high is this one?
Three stories.
Three stories. So they are exempted from prevailing wage. So we have a narrow path to, and I've supported all the previous LRTDs, but I'm saying, we have a narrowed path that because this project is below three stories, prevailing wage does not kick in.
Correct, it's below four stories, so-
Below four stories, it's a three-story project. Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Council, for that Q and A, and thank you, staff, for answering several different questions. We are returned to Agenda Item 3, a priority goal action, adopting a resolution approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the Lucy Apartments. Are there any additional questions from Council? Counselor Keating.
Are we able to seek any clarification from Local 541 representatives?
Not tonight, not during this meeting.
Thank you, City Attorney. Additional questions from Council? Seeing that, I will turn to, oh, sorry, Counselor Clark, thank you.
Once we vote to grant, there's no option to do otherwise, or there is an option if we were to learn something new, to make a different decision at a later point.
Well, it's, that's a good question. I see Lauren trying to come up to this podium, so I'll let her speak to this, but, I mean, you can, you can adopt, I'll say what I'm going to say, and I'll see what she says. You can adopt the resolution this evening, and then you would have the opportunity at your next regularly scheduled meeting for somebody that voted in favor of it to make a motion to reconsider. I will say the fact that they're moving forward with financing on the 29th may complicate that a little bit, so that's just an extra fact. From a Roberts Rules and a procedure standpoint, you have the ability to reconsider a decision at your next regular meeting if you voted in favor of the decision.
Which is Tuesdays from now, Wednesday the 20th, yeah, all right, thank you very much.
I'll just stand here in case.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Monday, November 10th.
Yes, that would be your next regular meeting. So if you vote, if you, if you vote on it this evening, I mean, you can do one of, you could do a couple of things. You would have the opportunity, if you delay, if you just don't put the vote on the table and the desire is to bring this back on the 10th, you would have an opportunity to have more information potentially about the applicant. It won't change the criteria upon which you can approve or deny this application. I think that was some of the points that some of the counselors, including Zelenka, was making. If you wanted to vote on it this evening and then was to get other information and make a motion to reconsider on the 10th, that would be an opportunity to, those are some of your options that are available to you. No, I know, I looked at your calendar, the 10th is your next opportunity.
Thank you, City Attorney.
I usually-
Any additional questions or discussion from Council?
Thank you.
Yes, Counselor Krasinski.
Yes, to clarify, we have decisions that we make that are based on very specific criteria that is within the, the code, and what we're doing when we're making those decisions is saying, do we think that this group, based on their application, met that criteria, or didn't meet that criteria? And our report says that, as shown in the report, the requested exemption met the criteria, and that as of when this was written, and I got it on Friday, no comments had been received. Is that right? I see nodding from the staff section over there. So really, really the question before us is, does this application meet the criteria as it exists, and there isn't an applicable criteria at the moment that deals with prevailing wage or anything like that?
Correct, Counselor Krasinski.
Thank you.
With that, I will turn to the Council President to put a motion forward.
Move to adopt the resolution attached, as attachment B, to this AIS, approving a low-income rental housing property tax exemption for property located at 860 Hunsacker Lane.
Second.
Any additional discussion? Counselor Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few questions that I hope that will be answered on that November 10th meeting prior to this November 11th drop, drop dead, deadline. I'd like to seek clarification, how our carpenters, partners, track or investigate wage theft in our community or throughout the state? Yes, there's a state avenue, but I'd like to also find out what avenue Local 541 is exploring. Moreover, how has wage theft occurred on a project that has yet to break ground? And so is, is it, as you might have, or as I'm interpreting, you alluded to, Mayor, is it an issue not necessarily with the developer, but with the subcontractors, perhaps? Is there a history of working with certain subcontractors who might be a little unscrupulous in their behavior? And finally, Mayor, I'd like to hear from Cornerstone. This body has already adopted previous LRTDs, we've already invested a million dollars?
Seven.
Seven million dollars? I don't want to get in the way of that progress in the 11th hour, so I'm going to be in the affirmative for a couple reasons aforementioned, and any counselor who votes in the affirmative then has the, as per our Roberts Rules, the ability to roll it back, should there be more information. So I just want to be very clear about what my intentions are and what my, what sort of information I'm seeking when we- of information I'm seeking when we next gather on November 10th. I do want to hear from Cornerstone, and I do want to hear from the carpenters, if that, without objection, if that's possible. Thank you.
Councilor Evans.
I want to state for the record, I'm going to vote in the affirmative on this based on the criteria that has been presented to us. However, I will note my objection to the fact that we don't have to, or this applicant or any applicant for a LERTD with a height restriction has to adhere to prevailing wage. I think it's wrong, and I think that this community has been victim, not just in the public sector, also from the private sector, of unscrupulous people who have decided to take advantage of the law. And I'll leave it at that.
See, Councilors Link and Councilor Groves in the queue, and we'll just make a time check. It's now two minutes to 10.
I'll be quick. When we had this conversation, when we were doing the Mupti reform, when we talked about prevailing wage, and we talked about a whole bunch of different things about the laws that apply to building and contractors. And in the end, what we did with Mupti was we had them provide a list of all the contractors and confirm that they had a proper license, insurance, bonding, workman's comp coverage, and then also provide an affidavit that the contractor, owner, and everybody else will not have any unpaid judgments or construction debts against or any unpaid wedges in that project, and that they will comply with all Oregon labor laws and tax laws, and they have to sign an affidavit for that. And we could potentially do that with LERTD as well, but it doesn't necessarily talk about prevailing wage, because it's very, as I recall, it's very difficult for the city to institute a prevailing wage, because that's state purview. And that's problematic, that's the problem. And I agree with you about prevailing wage, and I think it should apply across the board, but that's not the law.
Councilor Groves.
Thank you, Mayor. And I, too, I struggle with this. I mean, it's, I've spoken with you guys before on this, and some of the wage theft that's taking place goes well beyond prevailing wage. I mean, people are absolutely, they're only given cash, or they try to give them a check, and then they say, "Well, for cash," because some of these folks don't even have bank accounts, they give them a much lesser rate, and there's a surcharge to get cash instead of the checks. I mean, it's just insidious how this happens. But I always dislike being in a position where we have just a very short timeline to make a decision on a project that will help people in our community. I mean, housing is a problem, and this is low-income housing. But at the same time, we seem to find ourselves in this position more often than I would like, where we have more questions than we have answers, and we have these short timelines that force us into making decisions that we might not make had we have more time. So, yeah, I know, I know. Welcome to the council. But that's, that's part of the problem. But I think we do need the larger discussion about this, and I've brought this up before, of wanting to have a larger discussion about how do we take care of the people that do the work in our community? And I recognize that cost determines whether projects get made or not. I mean, even with our Mupti program, we're not getting a lot of construction. We're getting no construction downtown. So, I mean, there's more at foot here than just this one issue. But, you know, at some point, we've got to come up with a full package of how we're going to address construction in our community, how we're going to address compact housing, which tends to be more expensive, especially in our downtown core area. But at the same time, how are we going to take care of our workers? So with that, I, and last thing I want to say is, Cornerstone is a good outfit. I mean, they have done a lot of good in our community, and they're operating on a shoestring. And then the last thing I want to say, because I saw some eyebrows go up when you start hearing millions of dollars moving around, you know, some of that is tax exemption into the future, but some of that, too, is the Housing Trust Fund, which is a surcharge placed on construction in our community that goes into a special fund, then can be utilized for promoting low-income housing projects like this. And it's actually a good program as far as getting capital to help get these projects off the ground and to completion. So with that, thank you.
Councilor Keating.
I promise I'll be brief. There was a hearing on this last Monday, if memory serves, and there wasn't anyone who, no? Councilor Kucinski, if there was or wasn't? I thought there was a public hearing last week.
The public, sorry, the public hearing last week was on a change to the LERTD code in general, not the specific.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. I told you I'd be short. Turning off my mic now.
Now, take a vote for this motion, motion on the table. Counselors, please lock in your votes on the tablets in front of you. Motion has been made and seconded, and we just finished council discussion. And the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. That concludes that third agenda item. We have one more, quickly, which is returning to Agenda Item 5, Consent Calendar 2. There was a request to postpone until following the public comment period to hear any comments related to a resolution annexing land to the city of Eugene located at 3241 Downing Street, or a resolution annexing land to the city of Eugene located at 2588 Dale Avenue. There are no questions from council. I'll turn to the council president to put a motion forward.
I move to approve the items on Consent Calendar 2.
Second.
Any discussion from council? Seeing none, I will now take a vote for this motion. Please lock in your votes, counselors, and the motion passes with a vote of eight to zero. Thank you. That concludes that agenda item, and that brings us to the end of our agenda and our meeting this evening. I now close the October 27th, 2025 City Council meeting, and we are adjourned.